Okay, council, it is seven o'clock and I officially call the meeting in order. Everyone, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Yeah. Okay, we have roll call. Ms. Martinez.
All councillors present and a quorum has been declared.
And I believe we have a councillor Bee Hill on Zoom.
And councillor Bee Hill is on Zoom.
Okay, good, thank you. That brings us to the next item on the agenda is citizen comments. For those of you who are in the audience who would like to make a comment, there were some comment cards out at the front of the door. You were to fill those out and. Oh, okay, so we'll go ahead and do the agenda approval.
Mayor, if I may, I had a question.
Sure.
Under consent calendar A, I've never seen this in item C A B. Were we given consent calendar for a first reading?
Yes, councillor, that is allowed, obviously, the second reading, which requires a public hearing would not be on consent.
Okay, I've never seen it in my thirty-nine years here. So, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, councillor Greco. So, anyone would like to make the motion for the agenda approval?
I'll go ahead and make that motion, mayor, that will prove the consent calendar, I mean, the agenda, I'm sorry.
I'll second.
Presented.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, not. All right, start voting. Ms. Martinez.
Councillor Bee Hill, what's your vote?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
All right, thank you, council. Up next on the agenda now, we have the citizen comment section. This is where, for those in the audience who would like to make a comment, you fill out the cards and pass them to the clerk. I only have two comment cards, Ms. Martinez, at this point. Did anyone else need any cards while she's out there, so we can make sure we address everyone? For the audience who are on Zoom, we will first hear from the people who are in the audience. And then we'll go to Zoom. Once we finish with the people in the audience here, we won't come back to the people in the audience for further comments during this time period. We do ask that you keep your comments to within three minutes. If you're still talking at the three-minute timer mark, I will politely ask you to end the conversation at that particular time, okay? All right. So, the first person I have is Ruthie Brown. If you could push the, there you go.
There we go.
There you go.
Good evening. A few years ago, there was a meeting between the city manager, the chief of police, and a number of people from the South Side neighborhood where I work. They wanted our advice and it was about what the homeless shelter had done to our community. We talked for over two hours and it was not good. Nothing came from that meeting. And then there was a Zoom meeting two years ago discussing the homeless camp and where it was going to be. Thank goodness, it wasn't placed in the original location. In my forty-five years of attending city council meetings, I have never seen so many people line up to comment on a Zoom meeting, no less. The huge majority of them were against a homeless camp, but of course, we all know COVID and we needed a place for people and all that type of stuff. Citizens at night were told that the city would only have to ever provide porta johns because they already owned a handwashing station and dumpsters. Now we have a fence and we have enhanced security and, oh, let's run electricity so that folks can plug in their phones and be in touch with their family during the COVID pandemic. And they can plug in their iPads to look for jobs. And as long as we're going to run electricity, let's also run a water line and, of course, free Wi-Fi. And then five huts plus a prototype, a one-time funded grant, according to Dave Osborne. I had a feeling when you ran electricity to these huts that it was just a matter of time before they all had power, but I guess in the back of my mind, I couldn't believe that. And now we're talking about ten more huts and electricity to all of them. I've been through that homeless camp twice. I've seen the abuses, I've seen the trash, I've seen the mess, I've seen the cords against camp policy, running a hundred and fifty or fifty, hundred feet. But when, when did we tell people Alamosa was a great place to stay in the winter time if you're homeless? When did this happen? And now we're, we're not only not telling them, we're, we're willing to house them and we're not, we're not willing to house them for ten days. We're, they can stay in those huts for a year. And then, then I look and, and I look at your waiver on people having to move out if they don't follow the rules and they can be out in three days. Have you ever tried to evict someone who's renting one of your houses in three days? I'm going to share that waiver with all of my landlord friends to say, hey, you don't have to go to court. I have a lot more to, to read, but I just wonder when it's going to stop. Are we going to have bathrooms out there? Are we going to hang Christmas lights? I, I'm a taxpayer, I help a lot of people, help a lot of people every single damn day. But I'm tired of our taxes going to this endeavor.
Thank you.
And I'm not trying to be rude, but I do want to stay and hear what has to be said, but we have had a death in our family today, so.
Okay, next, we have James Slovak.
My question is regards to Saint Benedict's as well. And I had asked Heather, what is the actual intentions for the electricity that's going to be talked about and possibly provided? Can you, can you give a little bit more insight on that?
So, James, during this segment, segment of the agenda, this is where you could talk and make your comments. We don't answer questions and we don't go back, but if you stay until that agenda item comes up, you'll hear further discussion.
Oh, we can discuss it.
No, you won't, you won't be able to discuss, but you'll hear us with further discussion. So, if you have any comments or questions, say them now and somebody will probably write some of them down, but I can guarantee all of your questions will be answered, but we will have further discussion, okay? So, within this three minutes, if you can make your comments, we greatly appreciate it.
No worries. So, you know, I agree that we, we need the homeless encampment down there, you know? I don't agree with the, what I like to call is like, they're like dog houses, you know? Why didn't we make a two-year, three-year, or five-year plan and put up like a fifty-by-a-hundred building with radiant heat in the floor or something like that and have it open to several people that are going to be able to come into it? You know, and make it so, you know, and I'm, I'm actually on the other pendulum of a bath house and a bathroom down there. I think it'd be a good idea, even if it's five percent of the people, you know, that want to get back into the workforce, you know, it would make it possible. But I also think that there needs to be some sort of rules and regulations down there. And is it the community officers that are going to go in there on a daily basis and give a report back to the police office, to the police station and then bring it to council? Because the last thing we want is if you run electricity in these places and put heat into these. I mean, at what point in time do we have to worry about building codes? And I understand they're under two hundred square feet, but once we start putting electricity into these places and put heat in these places, that has to be considered. You know, on, you know, someone goes in there and there's electricity and there's something up against the wall and, you know, a fire could occur. You know, I was volunteer firefighter for twenty-five years, so that kind of hits home for me, you know? Homeless or not, you know, we have to look out for what's best for them and not just a place to, you know, have three, four, five, six people, you know, just crash in a little place. So, and I know my time's up, there'll be several other meetings I'll be here for, so thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you very much. Okay. Okay, up next, we have Shayna Diaz.
Thanks, Mayor Coleman, and good evening to councillors, I think. So, my name is Shayna Diaz, I am the director of volunteers and street outreach for La Puente. And I've interacted with most of you in one way or another, but welcome to councillor Woodward, this is our first meeting, it's nice to meet you. So, I'm here to kind of address some of the concerns that have already come up and that councillors have actually brought to our attention in previous meetings. So, my first thought is, I'd like to tell you first off that the shelter itself, there's some questions about whether it was open and capacity. They are not open right now, the shelter is at full capacity and by public health standards, that is fifty percent. So, of the forty-four beds, only twenty-five can be used. And it is important to recognize that COVID is still a concern, we have eleven people that are in the non-congregate shelter, we have two staff out, one of them night staff. And in a congregate facility where this is like a dormitory setting, it is just not safe to have a lot of people in there. Okay, so that's one of our concerns and a few, actually, it's been a year and a half now. The city has done a lot of work and effort to establish Saint Benedict's and I commend you and I thank you for all of the effort that you've put in so far. I know it's been a lot and I know there's been a lot of questions about the need for Saint Benedict's. But I'm the person that goes out and talks to people, I'm the person that helps figure out who's in the huts, helps them get connected to resources. And from there, I believe that our biggest impact and our biggest success out at Saint Benedict's right now is that there is a community. There are twelve huts, seventeen people, thirty on whole, so there are a lot of tent campers. And the issue, the question right now is about the electrical unit. So, there are amenities, thank you for referencing that before, but the electrical unit was originally intended for just phones to be charged, charged. I understand that, I get that. I think in the cold, in the harsh winter, people began running electric, extension cords. And this is against the regulations, it is against the rules. And this puts our law enforcement in particular in a really weird predicament, right? They have to go out there and they have to tell people not to run extension cords, not to, not to break this rule. And it's not working, right? So, this is not working for the residents, it's not working for the law enforcement, it's not working for the city, it's not working for us as service providers because we also become the face of that now. And I think together, we can come up with a better solution. I'm not going to, I, we don't have time to go through solutions right now. What I am asking is that we do make this a further agenda item so that myself plus other people who know a lot more about funding sources and data and electricity can come up and tell you about all of those things, those options. But I think if we can put it on an agenda item and then be able to vote and talk about what it means to run electricity to huts and have that availability to residents at Saint Benedict's, I think we can really make some progress together. Thank you.
Thank you. And for those in the audience, I have one more, but it is an agenda item and we will be having discussions about this tonight, so don't leave. Okay, up next, we have John Walters.
Good evening. For the record, my name is John Waters, I'm a resident of Alamosa. And I've recently been hired to be the news editor of the, of the Valley Courier. I wanted to take this opportunity to pledge to you what I'll be doing in the next months, years to come. Honorable mayor, council, city manager, chief. My goal is to work with integrity, dignity, and civility to report on the city and to work with you. And to bring that message, to communicate that message to the residents of Alamosa. And it's my firm belief that if we, in the media, myself, if we can let our citizens know, let the residents know what's happening with the city, a better informed population makes for a better city. So, I look forward to it and I thank you all for the time.
Thank you, John, appreciate it, welcome. Okay, next, since we don't have any more comments cards here, we're going to open up comments for those who are on Zoom. Ms. Martinez, if you don't mind, could you explain and give the instructions for those who are on Zoom of how to unmute their phones and so that we could recognize them and give them an opportunity to speak during the citizen comment section?
Yes, sir, so if you're on the Zoom app and you want to speak for citizen comment, you'll use the raise your hand feature in the bottom of your screen. And if you're on a telephone, you'll dial star nine. Mayor, I'm not seeing anyone raising their hand.
Okay, so at this time, we don't see anyone with their hand raised, so since I don't see any hands raised, we're going to close the citizen comment section and then I'll just turn it back over to staff for a follow-up, if there's any follow-up comments.
Mayor, since the public comment related to an agenda item that we'll be covering later in the meeting, my, my staff update at that point in time will address it.
Okay, thank you. That brings us down to the next item under ceremonial items, introduction of our new planning technician, who's going to give us the honors?
I believe Rachel is coming up.
Ms. Rachel, thank you.
This is the newest addition to the development services department, her name is Beata, it's like a Mazda Miata, but with a B. Her last name is Ramza, she is from Chicago, she's an environmental science major. She has worked at the Tongas National Forest in Juneau, Alaska. She's worked at the Gateway Arch National Park in Saint Louis and she is fluent in Polish. So, she's been a great addition, this is her third week and we figured we should probably introduce her to you. And I told her she has to stand at the Beata-sized podium because I'm standing at the Rachel-sized podium.
Okay, good, feel free to say a few words, Beata.
Hello, it's nice to meet everyone and I'm excited to be working here.
Welcome, I'll, I'll go down to the council if you turn your lights on, if you want to say anything, anybody have any comments? Okay, all right, councillor Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor, Beata, welcome, we're glad to have you on the team. I, it feels like our development team, our planning team, all of that is really becoming super solid, so thank you for joining our team and we're glad to have you.
Okay, and Beata, we wish you much success, I can tell you, you're working with a great team over there and I'm looking forward to seeing other successes that you all are going to have as we move forward. Wish you the best.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rachel. Okay, that brings us to the next item on the agenda, consent calendar A. Councillor Daniel?
Mayor, I move that we approve consent calendar A.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, we have a motion in a second, any further discussion? Not. Start voting? We got one more here, oh, okay, all right, good. And councillor Bee Hill, you want to make his vote too?
Councillor Bee Hill, what's your vote?
Yes.
Okay, the motion carried five to one, I'm not sure which councillor voted no.
I think it could have been councillor Greco, is that you the no vote? Okay, it's councillor Greco with the no vote, all right. That brings us to the next item on the, the business, on the regular business, State Avenue construction update.
Evening, council, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, I just wanted to give you an update on this year's construction project, we're planning on State Avenue, established in the street trust fund. This is probably the biggest project the city's ever undertaken in one year. We're going to start with, starting at State Avenue, we're going to start at Sixth Street and we're going to work south. We're going to break that up into three phases. Our first phase were, because that's kind of the gateway for the southern part of the, the city right there. We need to try to get through and across the railroad tracks and into Eighth Street as quick as possible. So, our plan is, is to go from Sixth Street through the intersection of Eighth Street. Plan on being able to do that within two months, weather permitting, you know, we're starting a little earlier than normal. We've got more work than we normally have, so we've got to push it up early as, early as possible. So, starting March first, we're going to go ahead and, and work through phase one. Assuming we get through there, first part of May, we'll pick up and continue with phase two. Phase two is, in tight end with phase three, it's really dependent on funding. In the CIP, the approved trust fund, we were going to break this up into two years. The funding's available, we believe we can get through phase one and two and three all in one year, completing State Avenue in one year. So, we're excited about it, the scope of the work similar or identical to State Avenue, or First Street, what we're going to do is we're going to overexcavate, we're going to remove and replace all the utilities. We're going to bridge that clay layer that exists and build it back up thirty-six inches, new pavement, curb, gutter, sidewalks, all the way down the, the whole, the whole street. So, pretty excited about that. We've contacted, last fall, we contacted the residents, we sent out a letter, kind of giving a brief description of what was happening, expectations. We plan on following that up with another letter here in a couple of weeks, it'll give them more detail and all, obviously, an opportunity to reach out to us for any questions that they might have. We've been coordinating with the business owners, it's going to impact them, you know, especially the ones between Sixth and Eighth Street, it's going to have a big impact on them. So, we're working with them, trying to figure out solutions for parking, accessibility, all those issues. Also, the chief of police, fire chief, you know, it's going to impact them as well as far as being able to get to the citizens over there. We could game plan, they're aware of it, they're making, making those plans accordingly. As far as the street maintenance program, everything that we have is in that fund this year is going into Twelfth Street overlay. So, we're going to pick up on Ross and we're going to take that all the way to the old airport road, which would be basically the entrance to the recycling yard. It's going to be similar to what we've seen on Fourteenth Street, so when it's all done, the roads in salvageable, salvageable condition right now, we do that plant mix seal coat overlay. It'll repair that, so it'll be in really good condition and will be similar to a new road. So, that's this year's plan of work, certainly if you have any questions, though, I'll answer them.
Okay, thank you for the update and I'll let, see if any council members have any comments.
Mayor, I just also want to thank Harry and his crews, they've really done a lot of meetings with the businesses down there and really tried to think as much outside the box as possible and so it's just a lot of time that's gone into this and I just want to thank him and, and Ray and, and the crews.
Yeah, thank you so very much, I don't see any, there you go, councillor Carson?
Harry, I just wanted to say thank you, you guys have really done a great job in expediting this and making it happen in a, in a earlier, much earlier timeframe than we expected. And the people are excited, people are happy about it and I just want to give you guys kudos, your team is doing great, thank you guys.
Thank you, councillor Carson. And councillor Bee Hill is on Zoom and I can't really see if he has his hand raised or not.
I don't, Mayor, and if I do, I'll just chime in, thank you.
Okay, thank you, all right, well, thank you so much, Harry, we appreciate the update and we wish you much success.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, so that brings us to the next item on the agenda, authorization to accept recycling resources economic opportunity program grant award. You again.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, so this was a little bit funner, I'll try to explain it the best I can real quickly. So, the RREO grant stands for recycling resources economic opportunity, it's the same funding opportunity that helped house or provide the funding for the new storage bill structure that we recently, recently built last year. The city has always had a stockpile of asphalt and concrete, we kept it on the south end of town and, and it's kind of become a mountain of, of material. And with the street trust fund project, it's only compounded that problem, almost to the point where we're running out of room. So, starting over the last few years, we're trying to brainstorm how to utilize that in the best way. One, what is the cost to, one, haul it off, which is, which would be a great expense to the city, but two, can we repurpose it? So, we started looking at opportunities, thinking outside the box, can we rent a crusher? Can we, can we repurpose the asphalt and, you know, overlay it in our alleyways, can we use it for pipe bedding? You know, the concrete, can we design a, some type of road-based mixture to help with our street projects? As there's a lot of money that goes just in the material, so early last spring, Deacon and Clifton and I put together a grant to the RREO funding people and, and kind of something they'd never seen before, but we were requested, we were requesting a crusher. Take that material and be able to repurpose it. So, put together what we thought was a pretty good applicant, our application, submitted it, unfortunately, we didn't get it, but they did say, hey, you know, it's a good, it's a good thought, it's something we'll consider. If more funding becomes available or if one of the projects falls through, we'll consider it. So, we kind of thought, well, that's kind of nice, you know, good honor mentioned, but it was, it was a good try. So, going into the budget season, we took twenty thousand dollars to what it would take to rent a crusher going into this, this upcoming season. We needed to get a, a handle on this material, so we needed to set aside some money, kind of get an idea of how often we're going to need to re, re, rent this machine to keep up with the material we're receiving from the project. So, we put that into the CIP, fast forward to December, the end of December, we get a call from, from the RREO grant people saying, hey, if you guys can get a crusher by June, we would, we'd like to fund this grant. And so, it's kind of a shock to us, one, you know, we didn't expect it, but two, the timing, we had to get it in place within, within six months. So, we started looking into the availability of, of new units, which there's not a whole lot of these just sitting around. So, the availability of a new unit just didn't exist, so we posed the question of a, a used unit and they said, yo, anything you can come up with, they're really trying to use the funds. So, we came up with a game plan, we, we, we did a lot of research, we actually elected a unit last week and posed the question, can we couple the, the crusher with an excavator? And for the award mount, the grant total award mount is just shy of a half million dollars, it's four hundred and forty-three thousand. They said, sure, whatever would make this kind of dream come to a reality, whatever combination you come up with, we were really interested in it. So, we've put together a package that we're going to submit to the state pending approval, that would be a little over the four hundred and forty-three thousand dollars, which we think is going to help a lot with the city repurpose the material. So, asking tonight if, one, there's two questions, is would council consider allowing us to accept a grant, let Heather sign the contract accepting it? But two, in the CIP that we put that twenty thousand to rent a crusher in addition to the four hundred and forty-three thousand dollars combined, which would allow us to buy both the crusher and the excavator and operate the operation for a few months of spring.
All right, wow, that's, that's great news, Harry, so I'll turn it over to council and then we'll, we'll, we'll move forward, okay?
But I should have started with the four forty-three, that's big, you know, at the beginning.
Yeah, I, I like that four forty-three, it's my new favorite number, good job. All right, so we'll, we'll go with councillor Carson and then I'll go to councillor. All right, so we'll, we'll go with Councilor Carson and then I'll go to Councilor Vehill.
I don't have any questions. I was apprised of this earlier. So if Councilor Vehill has comments, we'll let him make his comments and I was going to make a motion to proceed because this is awesome.
Thank you. Councilor Vehill?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Carson. Just kudos to you, Harry and staff and for getting this done. I know, for me personally, one of my big things being on council has been pushing recycling efforts and trying to keep as much off the landfill as possible. And this is huge and I really like, just like our glass crusher, the fact that we can repurpose and reuse these things. So, I'm all for it and I would second your motion, Mr. Carson.
Okay, we, we still have another council member who might like to make a comment before we do the motion part is Councilor Henson.
So this is awesome. I, sorry, just to clarify what you said at the end. So you said for the 20,000, you do still want to rent the crusher? I, I just didn't quite hear what you said.
I apologize.
No, no, it's me.
The grant value is $443,500. I'd like approval to use the 20,000 we had in the CIP. In addition, we had it identified for rental, but I'd like it to go towards the purchase to make sure we're able to purchase both pieces of equipment.
Got it. So that would just make it so we can get both?
Yes.
Perfect. All right, I just wanted that clarification. Thanks.
And it's needed as match.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, so since I don't see any other mics lit, I'll let Councilor Carson go ahead and make the proper motion.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Start voting, everyone.
And Councilor Vehill, what's your vote?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you and thank you, Harry, and your team did a wonderful job. That's really good news. Okay, that brings us to the next item on the agenda, under Human Resources, Public Hearing and Second Reading for ordinance number 1-2022.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the second reading before council. There's two minor changes we needed to make to the pay plan following the approval as part of the budget process in October. The first one is, in October, we didn't know what the new state minimum wage was going to be. And so there are a few, like one or two positions that we do need to increase. There is still plenty of room between those positions and our other grades, so there's no need to adjust the rest of the pay plan. And then the other change is, we accidentally left off the police apprentice position when we approved the pay plan in October. So it's to add that back in at the appropriate, appropriate pay grade. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So we'll go ahead and open it up for a public hearing for the second reading of ordinance number 1-2022. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to make any comments in regards to this ordinance, please feel free to come up to the podium and voice your comments. Okay, I don't see anyone in the audience who would like to make any comments. So what we'll do, Ms. Martinez, if you can give the Zoom participants instructions of how to raise their hands so we can recognize them, so that they can participate.
Yes, sir. If you are on Zoom and you want to speak for this ordinance, use the raise your hand feature in the bottom of your screen. And if you're on a telephone, you'll dial star nine. Mayor, I don't see anyone raising their hand.
Okay, we don't see any hands raised here, so we'll bring it back to council and we'll officially close the hearing. Bring it back to council for comments. Anyone like to make a motion then? Okay, Councilor Grego?
I don't have a comment, but I'll go ahead and make the motion that we approve. Ordinance number 1-2022.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, now start voting. Ms. Martinez?
Councilor Vehill?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, good, good. So that brings us down to the next item on the agenda. Item C, request for future agenda items brought forward by council members. This is the discussion of providing electricity at St. Benedict Campsite. Ms. Brooke, could, could you give us an update and overview of this situation before we start having discussion?
Thank you, Mayor. And I am going to spend a little bit of time of this. Just because some of the questions we get from the public and some of the ones you've received tonight, clearly, there's a lot of questions surrounding this issue. This is also probably one of the most easily misunderstood items that the city has undertaken in a long time. And so any opportunity to provide clarifying question or information is always good. And so, to start with, we did have a comment tonight in regards to throwback of some of the neighborhood meetings that we did have with those residents that had concerns surrounding the shelter along State Avenue. I'll have to disagree with the opinion that nothing was done with that information. In fact, exactly the opposite. It's information that we relied on for very good communication with La Pointe Organization, the La Pointe Board. It helped council understand what was going on. I, I think from sitting on the La Pointe Board, it, it helped those board members have an understanding of what those neighbors felt. There's discussions on, should they make changes to how they do some of their operations? It's discussions that also carried into those that we have on the homeless coalition. And so, I would just have to disagree that even though it didn't result in moving the shelter, which is maybe what is the only thing that would make people think something came out of those discussions, that's not necessarily realistic. It was taking a look at the operations, having La Pointe be open for those discussions and, and having those types of things. And it's a, it's an ongoing discussion that we continue to have. So, I do, you know, strongly disagree with that opinion. In regards to the point of the electricity, why we didn't put something, maybe a little bit more out there, rules, regulations, I'm just going to, as best to answer all that, just provide the history of why we were even here and why, what services we have out there are out there and what was promised or not promised in some of those meetings as well. When we first began the discussion of looking at a campsite, it 100% was from a temporary perspective related to COVID. We had individuals in our community that the shelter was closed, the buses were closed, every single bathroom was closed, city facilities were closed. The, I think the bus I said was closed. So we had individuals in our community that had no access to restrooms, to running water. They couldn't get on a bus and leave to go somewhere else. It was in a good situation to have in a pandemic. And, and so, we felt from the La Pointe, from the city and the county, that this was not a good situation and something needed to be done. We did identify a location of city-owned property just north of the cemetery. We sent some letters out, we had some meetings. Yes, there was strong opposition to that. There was some residents that lived near that area. And so, council listened. And, and the other thing, though, that became very apparent was some of the comments that are being, were being brought up were those comments that were brought up when we did those neighborhood meetings, which is the impact of having individuals sleeping in the alleyway or along the trails or in these other areas that they are not supposed to be camping in and people not feeling safe with that and that not being the right environment. And so, a lot of those were mixed in with those comments and some were specific to location, especially for those individuals that lived across the street and that. But then also from the neighborhood in general, very similar comments that we heard when we had the outreach that Ms. Brown referred to. And it's at that point that council decided to pivot because we had known, in order to do some of the enforcement that the neighborhood wanted us to do in regards to camping in some of the public places, we needed to have a place that would legally be okay to camp. So that pivot was to, yes, we need to get something up quickly because of COVID, but we need to find a better location because it was going to be a permanent campsite. And so, that was a very tangible outcome from hearing the neighborhood concerns when we did that outreach that Ms. Brown referred to and listening to the same comments that were coming up in that other conversation. We looked at what city and county-owned property we had that we felt would be appropriate in that we wanted to limit the exposure to residential properties. We still wanted it to be within walking distance of some of the services. And so, county services, behavioral health services are out there. And then it's not that far from La Pointe with the kitchen and the food distribution situation, although that changes during COVID. So, the, there's not very much property the city and county owned. And so we quickly honed in on that property that we are located, which is next to the industrial park on the other side of the, the solar field from the rec center. That piece of property had some good parts to it in that it has a ditch that provides some privacy on one side. But then on the south and the east side, you don't know if you're on the city property or private property for the industrial park or other property to the south. And so that's when we did go after a grant in order to put a fence. The fence serves two purposes. It's to protect the neighboring property owner so people aren't accidentally on their property. So it clearly shows where the camping should be, but it also provides a little bit of privacy for those people who are camping out there and connect a little bit from a wind buffer and, and some of those types of things. Although it's a big piece of property, so the wind still gets in. So, that's when we started moving forward. What was promised from the beginning, even when it was going to be a temporary, was that we were planning on having water. At the time, it was going to be potable water in the container that the county owned. So they would be driving it in and we'd have to make sure it stayed filled. We were always providing porta-johns and the trash related to COVID. When it became something where it was going to be permanent, that's when it was, well, it's still, you can't keep relying on a portable water container and you need water to wash your hands or things like that, especially during a pandemic. So that's when we have one line that's run for potable water. We have one line that's run for electricity that was only intended, as Shanae indicated, to charge mobile devices. We do have porta-johns and we've worked closely with outreach to make sure we have the right amount out there based on the numbers and the usage. And of course, we have trash out there, so it's not fancy. I think a lot of individuals in the public question, why do the electricity and why do the Wi-Fi, which I haven't touched on yet? If you listen to the community and what their concerns are, a lot of times it centers around loitering and individuals loitering in the downtown or in the parks or in front of their business and those types of things. Well, a lot of times when loitering is occurring, it can be because they're trying to access Wi-Fi or charge their devices. We cannot control, control loitering. Now, if they're on private property, that private property owner can ask them to leave. But if they're in a park, using the park as it's intended, then that's what, what's there. If they're downtown and sitting in an area that's intended for the public, they're legally able to do that. We cannot stop that legally. So, if we don't have a stick, the concept is to use a low-budget carrot to try to maybe reduce some of the loitering that we were getting complaints about, which is for Wi-Fi and electricity. And so I think some of these concepts are just misunderstood. We did put cameras out there. We felt it was important, especially the areas where we have the city facility park, just to have a little bit of, of a camera. Those did come in handy when we had the one individual set a fire. We did go in there, so there's a road, we marked the different locations and we do have rules that they do have to sign. And as Shanae indicated, what, what we started to run into is the electricity that was put in there purely to charge mobile devices was always having electrical cords. And there is no way for Shanae's group or our group to be policing that because we'd, we'd go pull them out and we'd leave and they'd plug them back in type of thing. And so, as she pointed out, it's not good for anyone. And for us, it's not good to have a rule and not enforce it, but we don't want to kick somebody out because that's the one rule they're breaking. That's a little silly as well. So what the city was going to be moving forward with was swapping out that electrical with the USB. So, no longer would they be able to just plug in extension cords. It would literally just be the USB ports type of thing. I think then the concern from some of our partners was during these cold weather times, that was doing a bit of a stopgap of, of allowing for heat out there type of thing. And if we change that, then that's a concern situation. The other addition that we then also allowed out there are the huts. And really, they're glorified tents. That was the intent of them. That's why we did not apply the building code because they're not a structure that's supposed to be meeting what the building code covers. It's zoned agriculture out there. It's for camping type of situation. And so, they're, they weren't intended to be any different, just more structurally sound than what the tents are. And so I think it's, it's important to, to remember that. And then we allowed for the initial grant and some funding La Pointe was able to pull together. When you count the prototype as well, there was initially six. And then I think there is additional funding that would allow up to 15. So that, we're going to have 15. I think we're still waiting on three because of the, the builder with the weather and some stuff like that. So there will be a total of 15. So, I think if I were to recap council's discussions, as, as they've kind of gotten into this more and more, is there's this very delicate balancing act. And it's, it's how can we meet some basic needs knowing that there's other rungs of the ladder that still need to come? And, and how do we meet some of those basic needs with intent of this campsite without shifting too far to where it's providing more than maybe what we've intended? But this is a fluid thing. This is something that council may have started over here and over time, it moves over here. These are discussions you need to be having type of thing. When I talk about rungs on a ladder, one of the questions tonight is, why didn't we put better things out there? Well, that's not the rung of the ladder we were working on. We, we really know that there needs to be other transitional housing. It's requires a lot more, not only from a funding perspective, but wraparound services and oversight and all of that kind of stuff. So, this was not intended to be those higher rungs of helping individuals get out of homelessness. It was, the, the huts were seriously a glorified tent. That's, that's what they were intended to be. And so, I know from a staff perspective, it's not just a question that we need council to discuss of, you know, who's going to pay for electricity or that kind of stuff. We feel the more pertinent discussion is, is should more extensive electricity be allowed to be out there? And yes, talk about who should pay for it and, and that kind of stuff. But it's something that starts you sliding potentially in different directions. I'll have Harry and Dawn come up. There's pros and cons to propane, to electricity, to those different types of things. And so I know our partners may not appreciate me saying this, but I, I feel like I have to from a historical perspective. We've had homeless individuals in our community for, I, I don't want to say forever, but we, for a long, long time. Way before the campsite. They didn't have electricity at the other locations they were at. This wasn't intended to necessarily change this. It was intended to be so we can enforce the no camping ordinance and meet those COVID needs as well. Again, council can choose to slide along that. But I just want to make sure that I'm clear from a historical perspective that we didn't enter into this as the silver bullet and that we're suddenly solving the unsheltered situation. And then when it comes to electricity, that can start opening up to other things. And so, Harry and Dawn, if you want to do some of the pros and cons for both the propane and electricity, and then I have a little bit to say after that and we're done.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Brooks.
Evening, council. Of course, the concerns when you're running electricity and the cords, then how much are you going to overload that system with electric heaters and stuff? So that's all stuff that has to be weighed in. Are you going to run underground lines to those particular sheds? How are you going to do that? And that's something. How are you gonna do that? And that's something that should be weighed in in the whole thing. Propane heaters would be a good option as long as they had carbon monoxide detectors. But anytime you start running electrical service and even just the small electric heaters that you see, uh if that service isn't adequate, it's gonna end up, we're gonna end up with fires. Or if they put stuff up against those heaters, then we're gonna have issues with all of us with the sheds out there. So it's something you guys have got a way out and it's definitely a concern on our end. I think probably the, I think last winter, you guys, Lance, you guys may be able to verify somebody was gonna provide some propane powered heaters out there. And I actually gave them my blessing for those. And I think that was probably be the adequate thing to do versus running the electricity, in my opinion. The big thing is is also you're gonna have to monitor the whole thing and it's a lot of lot of requests on city staff, so.
I I think echoing basically what Dawn said is is important. Uh electric seems like a simple solution. Um once you when you start, once you start going down that road, how do you monitor what's being plugged in, you know, resort the resource resourceful individuals? You know, you'll have TVs, other other hot plates, other things to consider that, how do we monitor monitor that? Um I think there's a little bit of ability to regulate propane type heat, you know, as it's established. It's cold enough, they can be provided. You know, in the warmer months, you're not worried about somebody turning on the power for something or another and left alone. But also I think it it's it's a it's a huge drain on on the resource out there. It's not the intent of the camping area. I think the intent with the propane falls in line of a of a campground.
Um and you guys can stay there in case council has questions or maybe if council has questions. But um I think overall, though, whether you think propane's a better idea or electricity, I think overwhelmingly, though, from a staff perspective is we're not gonna have the capacity to monitor the situation. So if 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 you decide that you're you're more comfortable propane, um that may work somewhat okay in a tent that's not airtight. Um but if you start looking at the huts that are a little more airtight, um we may also want to require that there's a carbon monoxide um detector. Um because there is a way to ventilate it, but we just want to make sure from a safety perspective. Um if you would decide that you're comfortable with the electricity, um we would probably want to have to provide a list of it needs to be these type of electrical cords. It's only these types of things that are getting plugged in. And then whoever is is trying to spearhead putting this in would have to also agree to then be monitoring that as well. And again, we can always be the the bad guys to ask people to leave and do all of that. But we're we're not gonna have the capacity to be monitoring all of this type of stuff too. And so there's just those types of considerations that that we would want council to be thinking of. And with that, I did I forget anything from a staff perspective? Okay, and so if you have any questions, I also know um La Puente is here to to answer any questions that that you may have. I think we had a bit of a misunderstanding in our communications. Um this meeting is intended to talk about what you guys are comfortable with and not comfortable with.
Well, um potentially, I mean, it's there are two things to to consider. One is we have governmental immunity for most kinds of liability. Uh you cannot sue a governmental entity for typical negligence. There are situations in which that immunity has been waived by Colorado state statute. One of them is the operation of a park. I don't know off the top of my head whether a campground like this would fall into that waiver of immunity. I would have to think about it. But let's assume that it does, um and that we have waived our immunity and therefore are potentially liable. There's also a question of negligence and what what have failed to do that we had a duty to do to protect people. And I don't think that if what we are doing is allowing uh electricity out there, that that's negligent. If that's all we're doing is allowing it out there, we don't have an obligation to monitor how people are using it. We don't have an, it it so if we install it poorly and the the main line catches fire, that's negligence. Um but if it's out there and somebody runs a three thousand watt heater and melts their cord and starts a fire, that's not our negligence. So potentially liable, but I I have a hard time envisioning how we could be tagged with negligence for just allowing uh electricity or propane or whatever it may be out there.
The other item that I haven't talked to the city attorney yet, but I had had a note to do, was to add language in the forms that they sign off on, um acknowledging that if they do any type of heat source, that there is a risk and that they're acknowledging that.
Okay, so those are the only questions I have. I guess my stance on the whole thing is I feel like allowing electricity, whether it be from an outside entity or us, is going against everything that the campsite um was intended for. Um again, I agree, you know, like Carson said, is I think we're opening up a can of worms and and it would create, I think it could create a big nightmare by allowing electricity. Um it's it's creating a potential hazard. I just, I I think that there's better solutions. We need to find a solution for those people um to keep them warm and keep them from freezing, but I don't believe putting electricity out there is is the right answer.
Thank you, Counselor Woodward. Counselor Hensley?
So my my biggest thing, um so I'm I'm also I'm not supportive of the electricity at this point. What I was concerned about, and I think I brought up at the last meeting, is from a health standard or that idea of just being humane. And so if it gets too cold, what can we do um to support if they're needing some warmth? And so I would rather look at something that is definitely much more temporary to the idea of cold weather. So it's sounding like that propane idea is an idea or, again, not trying to be an expert in that area, but what is it that we could do? Um again, just more from a humane so that people aren't freezing, you know, that type of thing. So that's where I stand on that.
Thank you, Counselor Hensley. Counselor Griege?
Thank you, Mayor. Let let me start out by uh some comments that were made about the area there that it's it's dirty and stuff. I've been one of the one of many people that have gone out there and helped clean that base. You go out there and you talk to those people, they keep the place the place clean, you know? You go out there and talk to those, those people don't want to be there. They don't want to be there. They'd rather be in some place else, but some of them that hit have hit rock bottom, you know? Through it alcohol, mental, there's a lot of mental stuff out there. And and where do they go? They go to hide because they don't they don't they don't want to be downtown so somebody could see them or or load her around. So they go to an area where they feel a little safe, you know? But the area out there, there is a lot of lies. People say, hey, there's needles and all that. That's that's a bunch of, you know? Because we've been out there, the very first time we went out there, we had some like two or three dumpsters and we cleaned it out. And from there on, those people have taken that responsibility and have done it, you know? Sure, you might have some people that have mental, you know, but hey, that goes with part of it. You know, I before those huts were there, people were taking these pallets and uh old lumber, whatever they could. And they were trying to structure something to keep out of the cold. Some of those people, I I bet you that that stuff fell on top of them, you know, and it's that's not right. We finally got, uh I forget where the grant came from, where they where these huts, you know, that they they were given uh so they could have something safe and not something luxury, something safe where they can where they can live in. You know, the problem with the electricity started with the cold weather. It's only obvious. And I've seen the chief out there going out there and unplugging all those things out there, but it's called survival. You know, when you're freezing and you have a plug out there, I I don't care if I'm gonna break the law. I'm gonna go plug it. I'm gonna stay warm, you know? And if if somebody can come up with an idea, even electricity or whatever it is, to help some but some of those people while they're going through a a tough time, because a lot of those people, some of them are drug people that are that can't get a job. You know, they're they're trying to, they're trying to find a way how to climb out of that hole. It's a hole and it's a tough hole. You know, I've been out there several times to try to get them to go to housing, get them housing and stuff like that. It's it's a tough deal, you know, and for us, folks, we're dealing with human beings. I've seen people that have animal shelters that are more luxury. Go down down here to Butch Southwest's house. You want to see some luxury for horses, that's luxury, you know? But I'm saying these are human beings that we need to help them out some way, you know? If it means, like you said, this guy walking around the street, hey, take him in or or help him find a job or or go talk to somebody. But this stuff about, well, we don't want electricity, we don't want this, you know, we're trying to help them out. We're the city's stuck, okay? Against the wall. Anything that we do or don't do. And I think that's, that's really good and I think we need to share those, those stories. But I, I'm like, I'm, I'm, I agree with Mr. Grego. These are, these are people, these are human beings, especially in the, in the heart of winter. I think it's, I think it's, we need to figure out a way to keep them warm. If that's through propane or electricity, that's where I think we need to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Vio. So I'll, I'll wrap up this round and then we'll start back at Counselor Carson, because I see his mic is on. So when it comes to decisions and choices, as you heard from all of the council and as you heard from our city manager and our city attorney, we take this matter very seriously. And we've put a lot of thought into a lot of decisions that has gotten us to this point. And it's not something that we take lightly. We're always trying to find that common ground, that balance to where we can have that harmony. Some things we do may appease the majority, but may not appease all. And that's what we're tasked with doing on a regular basis. For me, when it comes to thinking about public safety, which is something that we all have to keep in mind all the time is, I always have to consider advice that we receive from our department heads, like our fire chief, as well as our police chief and, and the public works director in this particular instance. And when we hear comments from our fire chief about it being more safe to have propane tanks and carbon monoxide versus electricity. And when we hear comments about the, the potential hazards and we hear comments from our public works director, we have to take all of those things into consideration. Some, some, some people may disagree, but as a council, when we're hearing from professional people who are designed, who, who are, who are part of our city to give us guidance and understanding, we have to put that weight on those things. So from what I'm hearing, it seems like a, a, a lot of, all the council members want to make some type of impact in helping those people who are cold right now. It doesn't seem like we want to do anything that's permanent or, or lasting because the, the original intent was for this to be a, a campsite, not for permanent destination. So we'll continue to have some discussions, but I'm more in line with what the majority of the council is saying. Yes, let's provide some source of heat, but carbon monoxide detectors and propane might be that, that, that cure for right now. Heather mentioned that this was a, a fluid situation. So it means that it's constantly moving. And I could tell you, our phone rings all the time. It would constantly get embalred with issues and concerns and comments from people from different perspectives for, for, for those of you to, to understand. It's not something that we take lightly, but we, we have to deal with the extreme on the right, the extreme on the left, and then all the people in the middle. So that's why we're having this dialogue. That's why we're having a conversation so that we can find that common ground. I'm just going to pass it back to Counselor Carson so he can make his comments. And usually what we do is we'll, we'll discuss this and we're going to talk about this until we come to some reasonable solution. So I'll pass it back to Counselor Carson and then we'll go to Counselor Daniel.
I guess to address what Counselor Grego said, I'm a little perplexed in the fact that I didn't hear a single person up here say they didn't want to do anything. And so the, the thing for me is, again, if, if you really want to do something, I can go home right now, grab a propane tank and a patio heater and keep ten people from freezing to death tonight. And that's the thing is if we want to act, we should act. But, but it's hard for me to, to swallow the fact that if you don't say yes immediately and fall in line with everything that our partners have to say to be called inhumane or that you don't care. Again, I've been walking that dyke for 10 years, talking to people out there. I was working on plans five, six years ago, you know what I mean? With people that I know that have been homeless here for, for a long time. And so again, if we want to do something, when we really want to do something and you want to look at a timeline, by the time you get a contractor and get approval and get grants, all this crap in line, you're going to be looking at March, April. People ain't going to need heat then. So if we want to act, let's act now. And again, you know, it, it's hard for me to swallow bashing people immediately because you don't say yes, jump on the bandwagon immediately. The fact is, is we do need to do something. I've talked to people that are freezing every night. And so propane is a good solution. I mean, if you don't like propane, there's wood pellet patio heaters. That'll heat, you know, 500 square feet and you keep people from freezing to death right now. So we need to, we need to do something, but let's do it as a unified effort and, and bashing each other because we don't all agree is wrong. There are solutions that we can come to that will help everyone and we can do that now in a quick and timely manner. And again, when partners want to help, bring them in. But you know, if we're going to start talking electricity and stuff like that permanently, we need to look at a better facility, a bigger facility, something that's really going to work long term. So you know, let, let's try to keep that in mind. We can do things now and not bash each other.
Thank, thank you, Counselor Carson. Counselor Daniel?
Thank you, Mayor. So one of the things I think that is the immediate need now is something like a warming shelter. So we had talked about this in the past. I'm a little, I know there's things about it, right? There's stuff, um, but thinking about the space we have out there and thinking about a potential. And I don't know, I have seen mobile things. I've mostly seen mobile showers. I don't know that I've seen mobile warming things, so I will just own that. But if there is a, a current, right, short-term temporary solution that could be pulled in for people to use as a warming space, I think that's something we should consider too, that, that can then be moved out, right? Like it's, then we can do longer-term planning, things like that. I don't know if that's possible, but what we are all talking about to keep people alive is keeping them warm through the night. That's what we're all talking about and making sure that that can happen. And so I don't know if there are mobile things to help that with, but then we wouldn't need as many things, right? We wouldn't need as much electricity. We wouldn't need a bigger plan, but we would need something. So I don't, I don't know. I see you turn your light on, Heather. That's all I have. I was just now rambling.
I'm just getting in the queue.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
I'm just getting in the queue system, so I think you had some other lines on.
We're going to keep our order, but we want you to chime in if one of them bring up something that you need to, to chime in on right away, okay? But we're going to keep our order in which we're going. So go ahead, Ms. Brooks.
It's not a hundred percent just to what Christina, I was just going to try to summarize a little bit of what I'm seeing, but I can wait till you're at the other side.
This round and then that'd be good, okay?
Counselor Woodard, any additional? Counselor Hensley? Counselor Grego?
Sometimes when I speak, it depends how you listen and how you take it, you know? And I in no way am bashing anybody. And if anybody here on council feels I'm bashing them, I'm sorry, but it's not. I was, all I was saying is that for us to say no electricity is wrong. You know, if the partners could come up with some kind of a measure, electricity, solar, propane, whatever, just listen to them. You know, and, and it's, it's something that we should be able to work with them in any kind of way. But let's see if, I, I think that might be our next step, if, if anything, is to see if maybe they could come up with something that would, would remedy the problem. I think the problem is in, mostly in the wintertime, if, if we can come to, put together something where that's either electricity or whatever that may be to cover those months, those cold months. And after that, pull the plug on that, I, I think that would work, you know, temporarily. You know, like you said, you keep on saying, this is a temporary thing, you know? I'm not saying to go build out a, build a, a electrical generator out there and, and, and something that's going to be so expensive and, and modern and stuff, something that we can work while we get those people out of there, you know? So, but Mr. Carson, if I, if you felt I was bashing you, I'm sorry you felt that way, but I was not bashing you. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Grego. Counselor Vio?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know if it's, it's the appropriate time, but our partners are sitting in the stands in the crowd tonight. Can we ask them to see if they have any ideas? Because the more we wait, the more people are still pretty cold out there.
Okay, so Ms. Brooks, how do you want to handle this summarizing or having them come up here?
So, so again, it's up to you guys on getting into the weeds. So what I was going to summarize is on the question that really was for tonight, which is the, the question of electricity. If you were to take a vote, I would imagine it'd be five to two. It's up to you if you want to take a vote or not on that. But as you summarized, Mayor, I think overwhelmingly everyone is open to wanting to do something. Some definitely comfortable with electricity, five not comfortable maybe with that, but some other type of situation. And so what I was going to recommend is maybe we, that staff meets with La Puente and does some brainstorming and then see kind of what comes out of those discussions situation. And obviously we wouldn't put it off for a month or anything like that. It would be a timely meeting.
Okay, council, what are your thoughts on that? Okay, everybody's doing, okay, all right, okay, good. Counselor Carson? All right, all right, we got a motion. Did you all hear?
I'll, I'll, I will second, since we have a motion, I think it's a good one.
We have a, a motion and a second. Any further discussion? No, counsel, before we vote, I just want to thank you all for being respectful of one another and being mindful and also letting the community know how important this matter is to each one of you. And thank you staff for your input and thoughts and ideas. Appreciate it.
Mayor, I, Mayor, I didn't really hear the, the motion. Could he say it again, please?
Sure, Counselor Carson.
The motion is to direct staff to meet with our partners to work on a viable solution.
Thank you, Carson.
Okay, and, and we have a second motion. Everybody's, please start voting.
Counselor Vio?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, before we close this out, Counselor Vio, it wasn't a question, but it was a comment that I do think is worth reaffirming. And that is the work that is being done with the huts. We don't necessarily require the individuals to do anything because they're all at different places as, as they're improving. But we definitely do use it as a carrot to engage a little bit more on, you know, have you gone to apply for a job? Have you gone to apply to get a license and, and those types of things? And there definitely are some very positive outcomes that have happened. I also want to point out the obvious, but I don't know if it's obvious to everyone. Those successes and those conversations wouldn't be happening unless there was that outreach program. And so that outreach program is very, very important, connecting people to the, to the steps they need to help take to get out of where they're at. It takes, you know, a lot of empathy and kindness and understanding and patience and sometimes being tough type of thing. And so, you know, that's not the city doing that. That is our partners, which is La Puente Outreach. And, and the other thing I want to point out from the huts is when you talk with anyone in the public, it's, you know, they should just be getting a job. Well, if you're going to get a job, that means you have to be away from your belongings during the day, which means that you don't want them to get stolen. One of the big benefits of the huts is they can lock their belongings in there and they can go to apply for jobs or to find work and some are working, which is another misconception. And so I wanted to point out the, the concept of the hut benefit from that perspective as well as it is to serve as a tool to help individuals become more independent. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Brooks. And I thank you to all of our community department, partners who help out in this cause and it, it takes a village. So thank you to everyone. Okay, that brings us to the next item on our agenda, committee reports. Do you have any committee reports? Ms. Hensley?
Okay, so I have three committees this last week. I did forget my tree board notes, so I'll have to do that next time. So that's where you get to break me up and I get to talk both times. But I'll start off with marketing board. Obviously, the motorway is down and it's no longer referred to as the motorway. We're now referring to it as the parking project. We did approve the RFP for that next part of making that a, a parking area with landscaping and things like that. Six hundred thousand visitors to the sand dunes this last year. So it just continues to grow and continue to develop and become larger. Even during COVID, it was something that continued to grow. So ki- kind of exciting news there. Then that segues into the Main Street Advisory Committee, which had a lot of great stuff. I think one of the things I took from it, I could sit here and go on and talk for an hour about all the great stuff, but I'm real excited about the First Fridays. It's something that I think is going to go really well. It's something for our downtown. It's going to go from March through, gosh, I want to say November, but I may have it wrong, but it starts in March. And they're going to start it off with Restaurant Week. But that idea of First Fridays is the idea to try to get businesses to stay open later. That idea maybe from five to eight, bringing in vendors, bringing in art, having sort of different themes for every time they do this, the idea of using that programmable spaces. So I think it'll be very vibrant and pretty exciting for our downtown. The other thing is we did get a couple of grants. One is for the murals. So there will be a, I think the first one is going to be on the papers of distinction on their wall. And then there's work, some thoughts on another mural and where that will go. And then they're also got the $430,000 ready grant to do two parking lots. And what's real exciting about that is not very often from an economic develop, development, Rachel did a great job in regards to having something go to parking. Not very often do you get a grant that goes to parking. So that's pretty exciting. And so we should commend Rachel for what a great job she's done there. I could go on and on, but lots of good stuff, so.
And Mayor, I just want to add on to, to Counselor Hensley's. That First Friday and all the work that's going into that, it's possible because of the city's partnership with the marketing board, where we have that contract where we're paying for, or 10,000 towards that position. That's one of the outcomes. And so I just wanted to point that out. So congratulations.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Brooke, and thank you, Ms. Hensley, for all the community partners who help out in this cause. And it, it takes a village, so thank you to everyone. Okay, that brings us to the next item on our agenda, committee reports. Do you have any committee reports? Ms. Hensley?
Okay, so I have three committees this last week. I did forget my tree board notes, so I'll have to do that next time. So that's where you get to break me up and I get to talk both times. But I'll start off with marketing board. Obviously, the motorway is down and it's no longer referred to as the motorway. We're now referring to it as the parking project. We did approve the RFP for that next part of making that a, a parking area with landscaping and things like that. Six hundred thousand visitors to the sand dunes this last year. So it just continues to grow and continue to develop and become larger. Even during COVID, it was something that continued to grow. So ki- kind of exciting news there. Then that segues into the Main Street Advisory Committee, which had a lot of great stuff. I think one of the things I took from it, I could sit here and go on and talk for an hour about all the great stuff, but I'm real excited about the First Fridays. It's something that I think is going to go really well. It's something for our downtown. It's going to go from March through, gosh, I want to say November, but I may have it wrong, but it starts in March. And they're going to start it off with Restaurant Week. But that idea of First Fridays is the idea to try to get businesses to stay open later. That idea maybe from five to eight, bringing in vendors, bringing in art, having sort of different themes for every time they do this, the idea of using that programmable spaces. So I think it'll be very vibrant and pretty exciting for our downtown. The other thing is we did get a couple of grants. One is for the murals. So there will be a, I think the first one is going to be on the papers of distinction on their wall. And then there's work, some thoughts on another mural and where that will go. And then they're also got the $430,000 ready grant to do two parking lots. And what's real exciting about that is not very often from an economic develop, development, Rachel did a great job in regards to having something go to parking. Not very often do you get a grant that goes to parking. So that's pretty exciting. And so we should commend Rachel for what a great job she's done there. I could go on and on, but lots of good stuff, so.
And Mayor, I just want to add on to, to Counselor Hensley's. That First Friday and all the work that's going into that, it's possible because of the city's partnership with the marketing board, where we have that contract where we're paying for, or 10,000 towards that position.
Okay, thank you, uh, Ms. Brooke and thank you, uh, Ms. Hensley for bringing that to our attention, all right, good deal, Counselor Daniel?
Yes, I forgot I had a committee meeting, the, um, ACLC met, that is one of the committees that, um. Only has to meet every so often and it is where the, um, city, um, talks about the, the debt that they incur and things like that. So it was a very short meeting, but it was, I mean, that meeting did happen, I just felt like that should be in the record, um, based on what we talked about at that meeting. So, uh, we did have the meeting, e- everything is going fine, there are no major concerns, um, and so it was held on January eighth.
And I attended that meeting and I really liked the way that it was facilitated by our attorney, uh, very prompt, thank you. Okay, any other comments, Counsel Carson?
Um, we didn't have a roundtable meeting in December, but we will have one coming up. And one of the things that is heavily on everybody's mind is the proposal from RWR to Douglas County, the commission of Douglas County. So I just wanna iterate to everyone to, uh, visit the protect san lewis valley water dot com website. Apprise yourself of the information there, share the social media links, um, share the articles. There's a ton of information, talking points, contact information for the commissioners in Douglas County and other entities, um, that are involved. Again, that's protect san lewis valley water dot com and so my jobs kinda cross over each other, but. Um, it's extremely important, uh, Counselor Hensley just touched on the amount of visitors to the sand dunes. And if this proposal were to go through and they were to get what they were wanting. Along with the sand dunes, pretty much everything else here in the valley would go away. So again, share that information, visit the website and, uh, you know, we all have people all over Colorado, share that information with them as well. Uh, you'll be doing the valley, uh, great service by helping fight this cause, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Carson. Any other committee reports? No, Counsel V Hill, no, no, committee reports? You do, go ahead.
Uh, I don't, but I, I'm gonna have it on Tuesday, we're, the library board's gonna be meeting, uh, over Zoom, so I will have one for the next meeting.
Okay, thank you, so we're moving down the agenda to staff announcements.
Thank you, Mayor, as, um, Harry works his way up, I will just do a few quick updates. Um, we do have the Rio Frio Fest, which is the January twenty eighth through the thirtieth. From a council perspective, um, we usually like to see your faces and make some announcements at the bonfire, which is Saturday night at seven P M. And so just wanted to make sure that you have that on your calendar. We also this Friday have our volunteer cleanup at two o'clock at Saint Benedict, um, I also wanna. I didn't go into detail with this, but this is another misunderstood aspect, um, related to the homeless campsite in that, um. You know, when individuals leave, they don't always throw away their stuff, they don't always take everything with them. It's stuff that's left behind, it's not trash from the people who are there, um, and the city has three options. We can either let that stuff continue to grow and become messier and messier, more of an eyesore for the general public as well as those utilizing the campsite. We could pay to have someone clean it up, which is using public dollars. Or we could coordinate volunteer activity to go out there once a month and clean it up. And so that's what we've chosen to do, I'm very grateful for the volunteers that do go out there. Um, if you haven't been out there, as Counselor Grego has indicated, it's not necessarily what people give the impression that it is. I'd highly recommend you go out there and volunteer, we can use all the volunteers we can get because we did cancel the last two months. So there might be a little bit more than there was when we were doing it once a month and so it is two o'clock this Friday. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Harry to talk a little bit about our favorite topic, which is the striping on Main Street, so.
Thank you. Yeah, you know, um, here's the reality of it, you know, the, the situation, it's, it's not good. You know, we know that we, we, we have a problem, we don't know really how to deal with, we've got other ideas and solutions that we're, we're planning on trying to. Approach here in the spring, I've driven that road, you know, in the daytime, early day, there's not an issue, you know, the, the painted lines are, are bright. You can see where you're going, you turn around a couple hours later and you can't find your way through there, so. You know, we've, we've swung, we missed, you know, that's just the reality that we gotta figure out a solution, we're looking at a few, a few other options. You know, biggest, biggest thing that we're looking at right now is how do we make that old grind mark go away? And there's a few options, whether we just try to fill it in with it, with a tack and, and a small, uh, chip seal type material. Or do we go from curb to curb and, and overlay the whole road, so we're putting together some numbers, some ideas there. Heather shared, shared an idea today that was good, uh, um, you know, of grinding, uh, recessing areas in the. New markings and putting reflect or something that'd be below a, uh, snowplow blade, you know, something that might hold up. So there's a lot of things that we're still gonna try and attempt, I mean, there's, there is a long-term solution of, of overlaying the whole road or chip sealing it. Um, but we're looking at some temporary solutions now, so, uh, weather dependent, you know, hopefully we can move forward. The paint, unfortunately, the paint's, uh, spalling, you know, I think we had a good coat of paint with the second coat that we put on after we did the, the, uh. The fog seal, C dot put a coat on right in October, it was cold, I don't know if that was too cold to apply, if that. You know, bonded and, and made that paint start peeling up, I don't have an answer for that, so. Uh, let's continue working on it, I know everybody is kinda elephant in the room, we'd like to figure out a good solution, but you know, we're, we're trying, we'll figure out something.
One, I, I just wanna share too, we're continuing to have discussions with our local C dot, um, they're aware of it, they're not happy with it either. Um, most of what we would wanna do though is weather dependent, so the stuff we're looking at, it, we cannot do right now. Um, and so that's a majority of it and so, um, I just, you know, it is frustrating, it's, it's embarrassing. And so it's not what we want, um, but we are pulling together numbers, we are looking at options. And we'll be back to, to share that with council on, on kinda what your preferences are, but you know, the conversations are good with C dot as well. So, we just wanted to share that.
Okay, thank you, I think Counsel Carson has a comment.
I, I just had a question, Harry, uh, I don't remember the exact number and I think I'm way off, I keep wanting to think a dollar forty a foot. But I think it was twelve bucks a foot, when we were having our, our streets trust fund discussion, we were talking about the different kinds of. Of easier applications to a street that isn't tore up real bad and, uh, I think the term was chip seal, is, is that what it was? Um, so, what's that?
That's one of them, yes.
Um, and again, I guess I'm basically kinda posing this question to council as well. Uh, if, if that was the case and you were discussing shoulder to shoulder chip seal, cuz honestly, that's what I think's probably the best solution for it. Uh, and I don't know if you partnered with C dot or, or how we do that, but you know, I would be willing to. Or I wanna ask council, if that's the case and staff comes up with that as the, the primary solution. You know, would we be willing to, to make a budget amendment to do that, I don't know what it costs to do the four blocks, but I think it would be. Mu- much more expeditious to, to just do that, um, and, and get it done permanently. Uh, I don't remember what the number was and I'm really curious, was it like, was it a dollar something a foot or twelve bucks a foot, do you remember? And again, that was before COVID.
And I don't know if we know what the old number is, but one of the things, Harry, why don't you talk about some of the rough numbers for the idea you're looking at?
Sure, um, current pricing where we're at, uh, if we were just to do chip seal from driveline to driveline. We're roughly looking at about twenty one thousand dollars just to do the, the, those three and a half, four blocks.
Twenty one thousand?
Twenty one thousand.
No, 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 let him finish, let him finish.
If you wanted to go to the new curb lines, the, the parking stop curb lines, you're about thirty seven to thirty eight thousand. With that, you have the additional cost of paint and, uh, traffic control, so to do it curb to curb, you're roughly fifty thousand dollars.
And that may have been one of the options we were gonna be recommending, it's definitely the cleanest and most permanent. Um, type of situation, which is why Harry was pulling those numbers.
Yeah, and, and there's a lot of conversations that happen, has to happen with C dot, that's what we're assuming would be the best solution, whether they would accept it or not, we don't know. Um, it is their road, so that would be something we would propose, what requirements they would, uh, ask in addition to that, we don't know, we haven't started that conversation. We just got an idea for the back of our mind, what, what does that cost?
Well, Sunday, uh, they, they almost ran me off the road and would have destroyed my truck and like three others and so that would have been a nominal cost. Which is the thirty thousand dollars to fifty thousand dollars, so I just wanna say that, I, I don't think that's horrible. Um, and I think it would save a lot of headache because again, Sunday, early in the day, about one thirty, it was a kind of a haze. And it got pretty precarious, I had a line of cars literally right down the middle of the road and they were trying to drive me into the parking lane cuz they thought I was in the wrong lane. It was, it was kinda scary, people were flipping the bird and pissed off and they're like, what the hell are you doing? And I was in the right lane and there was a whole line of cars off the corner main, just go barreling down Main Street and that was about one thirty, it wasn't even a dusk or dawn, so. Yeah, I don't think that's a bad number, so I'd pose to council, if they come to us with that, we should rock and roll on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Carson, thank you, um, Harry, that's it, okay, all righty. So that brings us, uh, that's all the staff announcements, okay, council comment? Um, any council comments? No, Counsel V Hill, oh, his hand is raised, Counsel V Hill?
Yeah, just real quick, Mayor, uh, thank you for allowing me to zoom in today, I, I've had, uh, I'm not sick. But I've had ten direct exposures at school and from ten different people. So just to keep y'all safe, just in case I decide to stay home tonight, uh, I hope you guys understand that, thank you.
Okay, and, okay, no other comments, uh, council and staff, I'd just like to commend you all for the way that you, um. Handled the meeting tonight, making sure one got their voices heard and then coming to, uh, some solutions of, of how to move forward. Really appreciate that, everybody working together as a team, well, this meeting is officially adjourned, thank you.